Now that you've taken your seats, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Nancy Gardner, and please remain standing for the invocation.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Please join me in prayer. Our Father and God, at this Christmas season, we come together and ask that we be the instruments for peace on earth and goodwill towards men. We ask that you would continue to bless our community, to bless those less fortunate, to protect our troops who are scattered around the world protecting freedom as we speak tonight, and that you would give us wisdom and humility in the decisions which we make on behalf of the people of our city. In your name, amen. Notice to the public.
I'd also like to note that the record will reflect that all members of council are present. Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda, on a future agenda.
Yeah, let me hold on that because it's my last meeting and I'm making three, four mistakes already tonight. I skipped on presentations. We have a distinguished guest with us tonight that I'd like to invite to the podium. For many years, our city has been ably represented at the State Board of Equalization by Michelle Steele, and she is here tonight, and I'd like to ask her to come to the podium. Michelle is going to make a presentation, and she is a very good friend, and as most of you, I think, know, is running for the Orange County Board of Supervisors, and I think would be a very effective representative. But Michelle, the podium's yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor Curry. And, you know, I just want to recognize that all the city council members are doing great job, and thank you. And, you know, Mayor Curry's been, with his experiences, especially business experiences, and he's been doing great job. Now that, you know, incoming Mayor Hill is going to be your mayor, and I was sitting down talking to him. He is a walking dictionary of Newport Beach, so, you know, he knows so much about it. He knows, you know, he always cares about well-being of, you know, Newport Beach residents' life, and I am so grateful that I'm here. I just want to recognize both of you, incoming and outgoing. Incoming, be careful because if you make any mistakes, I'm going to take this proclamation back. So I'm going to give you both of them, if it's okay, that time allowed, and both of us, I mean, both of you come down. Thank
Okay, I also understand, and I just want to recognize him to stand up, Dave Grant, the trustee of the Coastline Community College District, who is here with us tonight. Dave, are you here? Thanks for coming. All right, now we'll begin with council comments. Councilmember Daigle.
I have none.
Mr. Hinn.
Yes, I have a couple. I'd have to say I was absolutely thrilled to participate in the Balboa Village Christmas tree lighting. We would ordinarily have done a menorah lighting, but the holiday was, timing was a little different this year for Hanukkah. But in any event, I was there for the Christmas tree lighting, and I'm very pleased that I was able to arrive along with Santa Claus on a dog sled pulled by a very able bunch of huskies that actually could gin up a pretty good level of speed on that thing. And so we took a little dog sled ride and over to Explore Ocean. They were gracious enough to let us use the inside premises for a little bit, where Santa had some children that were able to sit on his lap, and I couldn't pass the opportunity. And so I asked Santa, as I was sitting on his lap, if he would at least please arrange for the reopening of the Balboa Theater down in Balboa Village for me, and he said that I'd been a good little council member and that he was going to see what he would do about that. So I took that as a commitment, that we're going to have a reopening of the Balboa Theater. We then went on over to the lighting of the tree. We had some really wonderful Christmas carols by the Orange County Children's Choir, led by Lori Loftus, and just had an all-around great time and did the tree lighting. I'd like to encourage people, though, that Balboa Village has got a whole new set of decorations and a whole new spirit, and I think it'll be a great place for families to go during the Christmas holiday, especially the boat parade viewing on the, between the 18th and the 23rd. It's a great spot to do that. We've had 200 children from Newport L. paint windows in the Balboa Village, and so it's all around very festive. And they're looking to produce a BCS, a Bull Championship Series pep rally, right around the time of the title game. So thanks so much to the Balboa Village Merchants Association, the city staff that's been so supportive of what we were doing in Balboa Village, and of course, the residents who are working so hard to really revitalize and make this a great, family-oriented place to go. In addition to that, then, a couple of meeting announcements, if I can find my notes here. The Balboa Village Advisory Committee is scheduled to meet tomorrow, December the 11th, at 4:00 p.m. at Explore Ocean. The main agenda item is to review parking governance, parking governments, I'll try that again, parking governance recommendations for Balboa Village as a part of a whole set of recommendations that'll be coming to council, I hope, perhaps in January of next year, for the revitalization of the village. And then the Tidlands Governance Committee meets on Wednesday, the 18th, at the Civic Center here, and we're going to be reviewing a capital plan update for the harbor. We'll be also talking about a recent policy document that's been issued by the California Coastal Commission on sea level rise, to try and understand that a little better and how we might interact with that. We'll be reviewing how derelict boats are managed in the harbor and what our policy is on that. And also, the Harbor Commission's report, they've just done a recent report on public peers and visitor access in harbor, and we'll be talking about that. And with that, I'm done. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hinn. Mr. Selig.
No announcements.
Councilmember Gardner.
The December meetings of the Harbor Commission and the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee have been canceled, but the Arch Commission will be meeting this Thursday at 5:00 in the Friends Room at the library.
Mr. Petros.
I'm Mayor Curry. Just a quick announcement, tomorrow at 7:00 p.m., I will be involved in a meeting regarding the Corona Del Mar High School Stadium proposal. If you have an interest in this topic, I would strongly encourage you to join us. That meeting will be at the Bluffs, in the Fiesta Room. The address is 2414 Vista Del Oro. Again, that will be Wednesday night, 7:00, at the Fiesta Room, at the Bluffs, at 2414 Vista Del Oro. I'm very interested to hear what you and the community and the neighborhood believe are the issues surrounding the Corona Del Mar High School Stadium proposal, and will share with you my understanding of the process as we, as the school district moves forward with that and where the city will be engaged. So please come out.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Hill.
Mr. Mayor, I have no announcements.
Thank you. The, I have a couple of announcements. The City Clerk's Office will be accepting new and unwrapped toys for children of our troops, new and used DVDs for the troops, and gift cards and cash donations for families through Operation Christmas, helping bring holiday cheer to California's military families. Let's show them how much Newport Beach appreciates the sacrifice that they make for all of us. This is a program organized by Yellow Ribbon America that supports more than 300,000 members of the armed services and their families. If you'd like to participate, please drop off your donations at the City Clerk's Office by noon on December 23rd. This morning, this afternoon, I was very privileged to join our public works staff in a meeting of the American Public Works Association. As many of you know, this building has already received the top award of the Southern California branch of the American Institute of Architects. Today, we were awarded the 2013 Project of the Year Award by the American Public Works Association. So this continues to be recognized as just an outstanding facility, one that is really getting international acclaim, and I just want to congratulate again our public works staff and our architects, Bolin Swinski, and contractors, who made this Civic Center possible. Last, last week, I participated in a very unique press conference that our Chief of Police organized to unveil the stolen collection. This is a very new and innovative approach to letting people know that the best defense against crime is your own actions, to make, to harden the target by locking your car doors and not leaving valuables in open sight in your cars. Twenty-five percent of all cars stolen are cars that have keys left in them. And working with a very innovative ad agency from Long Beach and using funds that were forfeiture funds, funds that criminals forfeited, we put this campaign together, the chief did. You'll see bus bench ads, you'll see public service announcements, you'll see some innovative things where you've got people who look like models but are reminding you that they really are there to steal your goods, and if you don't take care, they will steal them. So I congratulate our Chief of Police for putting that program together. I also had a chance to speak at our Citizens Police Academy graduation. I know Mayor Pro Tim Hill has gone through our Citizens Police Academy. We have such a great group of citizens in our community, both in this program, insert in our radio programs of volunteers and policing, people who give back to the community and make this a safer place to live each and every day. And it was great to see so many enthusiastic and active volunteers who participate in that program. One of the things that really makes you proud to live here happened on Sunday. I was up for the Newport Coast Moms Club Holiday Carnival at the Newport Coast Community Center. There, we had some just truly tremendous and innovative young ladies and families raising money for the Phelan McDermott Syndrome, a very rare genetic malady that can trigger autism. And the kind of effort that was put into that event, the community spirit, the fundraising that went on for that, shows you just how much compassion our community has and what the people of Newport Beach and Newport Coast can do when they get together to solve a problem. And I was just so, so impressed by the effort in that, in that event, and I commend that cause to you. Also, this week, we had the Corona Del Mar Christmas Walk, and, you know, you can just sort of walk the streets, and it makes you proud to be a resident of Newport Beach, to see all the businesses out, everybody having fun. We had great Newport Beach weather, the music was good, and it was a very, very spectacular day in Newport Beach. And I also had a chance to speak at Wake Up Newport, at the Chamber of Commerce, and share some thoughts about the city. We'll talk about some of this perhaps later on, but it was great to see how vibrant and active our business community is now, and how the Chamber of Commerce has been revitalized under its current leadership. I would make one comment. I noticed in today's paper, Amy Sink had a piece about the fuel at fire pits and the regulation of that, and I think she made some good points of what we ought to do to follow up, to see if we can accelerate the policy that we adopted at the last meeting about moving to regulating clean fuels of what people are burning in those pits. And let's, let's move forward to get that taken care of. Okay, with that, we will now go to public comments on the consent calendar.
Public comments are invited on Consent Calendar items 1 through 15. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. To the extent that any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The City Council has received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Are there any items to remove from the consent calendar? Councilmember Gardner.
I will record a no vote on number four, and I have a question for the city attorney on number six. We received a letter that you have addressed from Horizons, but then we have a second letter from CASA or KASA Construction. Have you seen that?
Yes, we have.
And is there anything in that that we need?
No, we think that the bid's fine, and there should be no problems with awarding the contract this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Petros.
I'd like to pull items eight and 13, please.
Okay, Mr. Hill.
I have nothing to pull.
Councilmember Daigle.
I'll be abstaining on one, the minutes, and also voting no on number four.
Mr. Hinn.
I have none.
Mr. Selig.
I have none.
And I have none. Okay, is there any public comment on the consent calendar with the exception of items eight through 13? Please come forward. Eight and 13, excuse me. I'm sorry. No on five, yeah, okay. Yes, Mr. Mosher.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas to you. Mayor Curry and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I did have a comment on item 13 and the closely related item five about the tourism bid, but I'll save that for your separate discussion. The other thing I wanted to comment on, on the consent calendar, was the city's quarterly, or in this case, semi-annual report that is in Consent Calendar. And as I've said before, I think these reports are useful, but I think they could be more useful. In particular, I wanted to point to the finance report, which is at the beginning, and I think it could be greatly improved, and I would suggest that you give serious thought to holding something like a citizens' focus group to determine how to make the financial information more interesting and more understandable to the public. For example, in reporting the city's reserves, which we find listed in here, I think few of us, including perhaps some on the council, really understand if these are reserves that are set aside for a rainy day or they just happen to be what the balance is in particular city accounts on a particular day. And we hear that many of our decisions recently are driven in directions we otherwise might not go because of the looming concerns about pensions, benefits, and workers' compensation. And we, the public looking at this doesn't actually get an impression quarter by quarter where we stand on those issues. Perhaps financial information is inherently too complex to present in a clear and direct way, but I think we should at least try, and a focus group might help to produce reports that would produce a better informed citizenry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Are there any other public comments on the consent calendar? On, okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items number eight and 13, recording a no vote for Councilwoman Gardner on item number four, an abstention for Councilwoman Daigle on item number one, and a no vote for Councilwoman Daigle on item number five.
Page is her second.
Just briefly, before you vote, I believe Councilman Selig would like to accuse himself on item number three.
I thought I heard him say that. Accusing myself of item number three, I missed that one.
Okay. All right, motion second. If there's no further discussion, please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for item three and four. Ordinance number 2013-27, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending Chapter 17.60 and subsection 17.35.020B2 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code Regarding Residential and Commercial Peers Located Upon Tidlands, an ordinance number 2013-28, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach repealing Chapter 19.54 Inclusionary Housing of Title 19 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code. The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you. We'll go to item number eight, please.
Mayor Curry, I, I believe that, from what I've read, staff had evaluated the proposals and responses to this service and acted properly in awarding this contract to Bagahi Engineering as they hover right around the median of the respondents. The issue, though, that I find I just cannot agree with, and I am hoping that I can gain your support for some change, is the schedule of plan check fees at the end of their scope of work. In fact, when one looks on the handwritten page 32 through 34, it provides a schedule of their rates for the year 2013, and most notably, escalations for 2014 and 2015, a very short contract period. Those escalations are 6% and greater. That means that over a two-year period, we are willing to, by virtue of entering this contract, allow this contractor to increase their fees to our customers double digits. I don't believe that that is what we intend here in the city, by evidence of what we just recently did with our fire fees. So while I believe that Bagahi Engineering is, is the proper selection, I would like to ask staff to go back and renegotiate this, and if there is an escalation at all over this two-year period, that it be tied to something like the E N R or C P I, something more in keeping with the philosophy of this council to manage those inflated costs.
And offer that as a motion?
Yes, I will.
I'll second that. Staff, do you have a response to that, or do you want to just maybe take this back and deal with it some more?
Certainly, Mayor Curry, we can go back and speak to the representative of Bagahi Engineering and revise the rate increases for the, the second and third year of the contract.
Okay. Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this matter, please come forward. All right, seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the council. The motion is to, I suppose, table this and then bring it back to the council at a later meeting. Please vote. I second.
Motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you, item 13.
Thank you again, Mayor. This one's very simple. The intent of this agenda item is to open a public hearing and invite public comment. I don't believe it was appropriate for us to have this be a consent item. It is the intention that we gather public comment on this very item, so the only reason I pulled it is for those people in the audience who may be here to hear this.
All right. So for those of you in the audience who would like to speak on item 13, Councilmember Petros has facilitated that opportunity for you. Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Curry and members of the city council. My name is Jim Mosher, and I do appreciate that the fact that we're holding a meeting and that the agenda is inviting us to speak on this has been made so clear. What perhaps was not made clear is what the subject of this hearing or meeting is about, and it is related to the Newport Beach tourism business And it is related to the Newport Beach Tourism Business Improvement District, and a request from them actually to shorten the span, which, when approved in 2009, was going to be five years long. And it's very closely, I incidentally am in favor of shortening the span of the T-bid and in fact doing away with it. It's very closely, though, related to item five, which you just passed on the consent calendar, which was announcing your intention at the end of the shortened span to renew the T-bid. What I wanted to call your attention to is in the staff reports for both item five and item 13, there is a copy of the California Streets and Highways Code, which is the California law under which the T-bid was created. And I'd encourage you to read at least the opening paragraphs of that that explain why the legislature thought there was a need to create business improvement districts in the first place. While it's true that the promotion of tourism, in a general sense within a district, is an activity that you can legally fund with the assessments, the broader purpose of promoting tourism is to revitalize struggling businesses trapped in blighted urban business districts suffering from inadequate facilities, services, and the absence of other activities. That doesn't even remotely describe what our Newport Beach T-bid is about. It's about booking rooms into very well-to-do hotels. And I think that should give you pause when, at the following meeting, you consider renewing this relationship under this code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Is there any other public comment on this matter? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back.
Mayor Currie?
Mr. Petros.
I'd move the action.
I second.
Motion second. Is there any further discussion in the council? Seeing none, please vote.
With Councilmember DeGel voting no, the motion carries six one.
Thank you. We'll now go to public comments.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Are there any public comments tonight?
Mayor Currie and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. We all, from time to time, say things that are either wrong or that are misunderstood, not understood the way we intended. And I thought this last meeting of the year would be a good occasion to correct some of the misstatements that I have made. I know Mayor Protem Hill was greatly offended at the last meeting when, as part of suggesting that we should have a councilperson on the board watching over how the transient occupancy tax is being spent by visit Newport Beach, I compared this to how we have council members on and reporting back at these meetings on the activity of other tax-spending agencies such as Vector Control and the Transportation Corridor Agency. I apologize for saying tax when I should have said fee, but I continue to think that whenever public revenue of whatever sort is being spent, close public oversight is very important. And, Mr. Mayor, I seem to have given you the impression that I'm against the boat parade. I am not against the Christmas Boat Parade. What I said is that it's a private operation, and before we commit to giving a quarter of a million dollars of public money to it, we should at least ask for some accounting of how the public money will be spent and some assurance that the event needs that money to exist. I also seem to have given you the incorrect impression that I'm against Girl Scouts. Quite the contrary. I intended to say that we have a great many worthy organizations operating in Orange County. They are among them. And in view of that, when we, as a city, commit to offering them a piece of prime harbor front property at $1 a year for the next 50 years, that is a gift, and we should have some concept of the dollar amount of that gift so that we can be sure we are treating all the worthy organizations fairly and equitably, as I'm sure the Girl Scouts themselves, with their high sense of ethics, would want. I'm sure there's many other things that I've said this year that have been misunderstood and perhaps offended some of you. And while I don't really apologize for the statements, I do apologize for any offense I have caused. That part was unintentional. Thanks for listening and happy holidays to you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Yes, my name is George Schroeder, and I'd just like to make a brief announcement since this is the last council meeting of 2013. Earlier on your consent calendar, this council just approved about $10 million towards completing two fabulous new parks for the West Side, Sunset Ridge Park and Marina Park. The residents on the West Side, we've been doing everything we can for the last 20 years to bring these parks online. I want to publicly thank this council and this staff and all the councils before them for everything they did. These parks are going to be fabulous. There is a need for them and a lot of desire and appreciation. And then I also wanted to piggyback with this in that anybody who has any interest in these parks and how fabulous they're going to be and what they're going to include, the first meeting of Speak Up Newport will be the second Wednesday of January the 8th, 2014, just across in the community room. It's called Parks Make Life Better. Our guest speakers are Dave Fueb, our Public Works Director, and Laura Depp Walter, our Senior Services and Parks Recreation Director. So they'll have the PowerPoints about how fabulous these parks are going to be and also about everything our Parks and Recreation Department offers. Thank you very much and happy holidays. And thank you, Mayor Currie, for your service to us this year, last year.
Thank you, George. Are there any other speakers? All right, seeing none, then I'm going to close the public comment period. As it is Christmas, I think it's appropriate, let me just make an observation. Recently, the Association of Cities held a special workshop in conjunction with some lawyers and the ACLU and others about the deterioration of the public comment period in many of the cities around us. Anaheim has had some just ugly and vile things said from the podium to the public during public comment period. In other cities, it's a very frankly disgusting and difficult period for people. And we are really blessed that our public comment, led by Mr. Mosher, by Jim Mosher, is always decorous, is always on the issues. Occasionally exhibits a rise sense of humor, and he does an outstanding job in proofing our documents and keeping us honest. And Jim, we don't say it enough, and I know I parry with you sometimes, but you do do a good job. So Merry Christmas to you and thank you for what you do. Okay, now let's go to public hearings, item, oh, excuse me, oral reports from City Councilmembers. Councilmember DeGel.
Sure, there was, I chair the city's Affordable Housing Task Force and did want to point out, we had an item this evening that repealed our inclusionary zoning ordinance. The city has a fund balance of $4.34 million to construct affordable housing, and our regional requirement is only five units. So we believe that we will be able to reach that goal. We have the means to reach that goal without keeping in place that ordinance. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Henn.
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Selich.
The Land Use Element Advisory Committee met on December the 3rd and started reviewing policies for the land use element. We weren't able to get through all of them, so we've scheduled a special meeting of the committee for next Monday, the 16th, at 3:30 in the Friends Room in the library. So we'll be having an additional meeting before the holidays, the Land Use Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner.
I have nothing.
Mr. Petros.
Mayor Currie, on December the 2nd, we had a meeting of the Bicycle Master Plan Oversight Committee reviewing the existing conditions of the bicycle facilities in town. The most notable part of this, second to the incredible response that we received in the public who attended, was the attendance of Mr. James Piñero. Mr. Piñero is the number two at Caltrans District 12. We have the attention of Caltrans as we move forward with greater mobility in the City of Newport Beach. You may be aware that there are some facilities in the city that aren't owned by the City of Newport, Coast Highway being one of them. And to have them attend our meetings on a regular basis and take an active role in providing safe travel for our residents and those on our streets is a huge effort and a huge milestone. So I would just like to commend them for attending and commend the public for getting them out there. You did good work. I would also just, I was remiss in some of the announcements. I was joined by our city manager, Mr. Kiff, and some of our friends at MOD for a walk-through of Cliff Drive Park. For those residents who are out there to watch the sunset, to play with their dogs, to enjoy the play materials that are out there, I will let you know that by summer of next year, you will see very, very aggressive replanting, painting, and repair of Cliff Drive Park. We had a great time out there, and the people of Newport Beach, and in particular the folks who live in the Heights, will be the beneficiaries of that review. If you have any questions about that, please see me, talk to me. I would love to walk through the park with you and show you what we're going to do out there. So it was a great time.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Hill.
I have no announcements.
You know, I can't believe we got through this entire meeting here. We haven't announced that just before we came over here, we broke the ground at Sunset Ridge Park. And we are underway on a 13.7-acre park that's going to provide a pointy league baseball field, two youth soccer fields, a children's play area, restrooms, picnic area, a butterfly garden. It's going to be a fabulous park. It's been a long time in coming. It's finally needed in West Newport, and it is now underway. Okay, public hearings, item 16, Miramar Drive.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Haiman Muriel here with this Community Development Department. I have a brief presentation on this item. This is a code amendment that would change the rear yard setback adjacent to an alley for six properties, from six feet to zero feet, consistent with the standard rear setback for other properties in the city when located adjacent to a minimum 20-foot wide alley. The six properties are located on Babo Peninsula in the middle of Peninsula Point. This is an aerial photograph of the six properties that are subject of this amendment, shown in the red outline. I'd like to just start off by explaining how the zoning code regulates rear yard setbacks for lots adjacent to an alley. The intent of the rear yard or rear alley setbacks for properties is to provide a minimum of 20 feet of vehicle maneuverability through the alley. So for properties that are adjacent to an alley that's 15 feet wide or less, the rear setback would be a minimum of five feet. However, for properties that are adjacent to an alley that is 20 feet in width or more, no setbacks are required. However, in the case of the subject six properties on Miramar Drive, the zoning code setback map, S2G, actually applies a block-specific six-foot setback adjacent to this alley. This is unique in that these lots are adjacent to a 30-foot wide alley, and therefore there's no need for the setback to allow for vehicle maneuverability. It's also unique when compared to similar situated properties within the vicinity of this block, shown in the yellow highlight. These lots are of similar size and dimensions. They also have about the same 30-foot wide alley. However, they're not required to provide a setback at all. In terms of existing conditions and pattern of development, only one of the six properties actually complies with the six-foot setback. The five other setbacks are either non-conforming or have been granted discretionary approvals throughout the years, allowing setbacks, encroachments ranging from two feet all the way to six feet. So for these reasons and to provide consistency with the application of setbacks similar to other properties in the city, the Planning Commission and staff have recommended that the council introduce the ordinance, approving code amendment number CA 2013-006, and pass the second reading on January 14th. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Mr. Henn.
I'd just like to move the item.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion in the council? Is there any public comment on this matter? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2013-29, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, adopting zoning code amendment number CA 2013-006. Councilmember Gardner, we need your vote. Thank you. To change the rear alley setback from six feet to zero feet for six properties on Miramar Drive, PA 2013-211. Okay, the motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you. Next item is motion for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Is there a motion for reconsideration? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the next item, which is the election of mayor, and I will turn the gavel over to the city clerk.
This is the time for the election of the mayor. All members of the City Council are on an equal basis to nominate and elect. The same procedure is also followed for the selection of the mayor pro tem. To clarify, nominations do not require a second, they are not debatable, cannot be amended or reconsidered, and a majority vote is required to elect. The motion to close nominations does require a second, it is not debatable or can be reconsidered, and requires a two-third vote. If there is more than one nomination, the voting will be done by paper ballot and the results read at the conclusion of the balloting. If there is only one nomination, the voting will be done using the electronic voting equipment. Nominations are now open. Do I hear any nominations?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Madam Clerk, I would, despite the fact that Michelle Steele might have stolen some of the suspense for tonight's meeting, I am very proud to nominate our friend and colleague, Mayor Protem Rush Hill, for mayor.
Are there any other nominations?
I have moved nominations to be closed.
I second.
Okay, with that, please vote on close of nomination, please. The motion carries unanimously, seven zero. Congratulations. Councilmember Hill, you are the new mayor, and you may take your seat.
I would like to announce that the elections are open for the mayor pro tem and would call for nominations.
Mr. Mayor, I nominate Ed Selich.
Are there any further nominations?
I would second that and move to close the nominations.
But there's a motion to move to close nominations, there's a second to move to close nominations.
Second.
Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, seven zero. Congratulations, Councilmember Selich. You are the mayor pro tem for 2013, 2014. Please take your seat.
We now have the annual activity that I refer to as the Dance of the Chairs, and we will go by seniority for seating. Our most senior, senior, councilwoman at this point in time, is Councilwoman DeGel. Where would you like to sit?
I'd like the seat, thank you.
All right. Then that puts us to former Mayor Currie. Where would you like to sit?
I'll take this one.
Where are you? That puts us to the toss-up of Councilwoman Henn and Councilwoman Gardner.
Women's first?
I'd be proud to defer to Councilwoman Gardner.
I'm fine, right where I am.
She's fine where she is. Then that's up to you. Then I'd like to stay here. Well, Tony?
Guess I'm standing put.
Well, that was difficult. With that, we're going to move to some comments. I believe that I have a presentation to make. Would you like to stand, former Mayor Currie?
If you benefit that way.
It's with a great deal of honor that I present to Mayor Curry his outgoing plaque with a significant amount of gratification, gratitude of the work that you have done for this city, that you know that you will continue to do for this city. We hope that you will move on it someday and do for this state. We feel that we have a great deal of financial security here in Newport, in part by the work and value that you've brought to this table, and we're not going to let you rest next year, but we congratulate you for the work that you've done.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And with that, I would ask if you would like to make any closing remarks.
Well, thank you, Mayor Hill. I certainly would. First of all, I would like to thank my colleagues for the opportunity to serve again in this position. I think being mayor of Newport Beach is just the greatest job in the world. You get to meet so many people. You get to find out so many things about our community, and things about the people in our community, and such a special place that this is. The charity work, the humanitarian work, the concern in the community and the neighborhoods, all throughout our community make this a very, very special place. It has been my privilege to work with my colleagues on this DS over the course of this year, in what I think has been a transformational year for Newport Beach. We have changed the way the city is going to go going forward, and most of that was through the inauguration of this brand-new civic center. It's a new meeting place for our entire community, it's a place for concerts and the civic green. Hundreds of people a day walk through the park, the dog park, which was sort of an ancillary item, has become one of the most popular parks, parts of the park in the entire city. The library continues to draw people, thousands or hundreds of people line up each day, a million people a year go through the library. It's next to the beach, the most popular attraction in our community, and I'm so proud of that. And half of the people who come, come from out of town. In a year that's been challenged because of the realignment at the state level and the release of state prisoners in the county jails and back on the streets, it's been a challenging year, not only for our community, but for every community, to maintain safety and public safety and reduce crime. Yet here we are again, for the third year in a row, looking at an all-time record low in crime in Newport Beach, and that's because of the great work of our men and women of the Newport Beach Police Department, who day in and day out just do tremendous things, are tremendously innovative in how they solve crime and how they prevent crime, and I could not be more proud of them. And we're kept safe every day by the men and women of our fire department, our paramedics, our lifeguards, who literally save thousands of lives every year on the streets of Newport Beach, and I could not be more proud of them. This has been difficult for our city employees. We have almost 100 fewer employees than we had in 2008, but we're doing more work, we're solving more problems, we're helping more people, because everybody has really stepped up and is doing a great job. And they are, as much as anything, a contributing factor to the success of our community, the public value that we have in our community, and I just want to publicly thank Dave Kiff and the leadership of the management team, and everybody in the city who worked so hard to make that happen. Just to remind you a little bit about the metrics of this last year, we finished with a 12-point million-dollar surplus, $7 million of revenues, more than we projected, $5 million less of expenses than we had budgeted. Our reserves touched $130 million, the highest level ever in the city's history. We never used our reserves during recession, we never balanced our budget by using reserves, we kept them growing so we can use them now for our capital programs. Our assessed valuation, the value of our collective property went up 5.3 percent, that's the highest increase of any city in Orange County, and it's because of all of the private sector investments that are coming into our community, because of the infrastructure that we're providing and the good economic climate that we have here in Newport Beach. Our hotel taxes are at an all-time record high. Do you know that tourists in our city pay enough money to support our libraries department and to support our parks and recreation department combined? All of that is paid for by people who don't even live here. Our AAA bond rating exists from all three of the bond rating agencies, one of only five cities for which that is true. We took the difficult decision on trash contracting, that's going to save $15.8 million over the next seven years. We dredged the harbor for the first time since President Roosevelt in a comprehensive way, investing $6 million on our most important economic asset. Today, we broke ground on Sunset Ridge Park, and within a very few weeks, we're going to break ground on Marina Park. The Balboa Boulevard beautification is underway. The sanitation district and our water department are making more than $100 million of investment to keep our water and sewer infrastructure strong and vibrant. Collectively, more than $70 million, by the way, will be spent on a cash-funded infrastructure program here in Newport Beach. As you look around here in Newport Center, you see evidence of economic growth and vitality. We're keeping the PIMCO employees here, they're going to continue to shop in our restaurants, live in our neighborhoods, and shop in our stores. The Explore Ocean facility down on the peninsula, along with the Balboa Theater, are getting ready to be revitalized, that neighborhood. We've agreed with the R.D. Olson Company for a hotel on the old city hall site to revitalize Lido. Our airport area is having an entire transformation to make that a vibrant neighborhood for people to live, as will Newport Center here. We've reformed our city charter, we've repealed old and unnecessary laws and fees in three different tranches, we've instituted new arts programs to keep us on a firm footing for arts going forward, we're updating our general plan with plenty of community input so that the general plan, which was the roadmap for our economic vitality in 2006, continues into the years ahead. We've gone paperless. When we moved into this building, we reduced our copiers by more than 50, and we now print 22,000 fewer pages every month. We have a mobile app, so you can contact your councilmen, you can report graffiti, you can talk to, you can see what's going on in the neighborhoods right from your cellphone. And our one-stop-shop development counter has won the Turning Red Tape into Red Carpet Award from the Orange County Business Council. We've reformed our pensions, and we lead the other cities in Orange County in working in collaboration with our employees and having them pick up more of the cost of their pension. We've gone to a second and third tier that exceed what the governor's program proposed that was going to have eight years to phase in, we're already there and passed them. And I just want to thank our employees for being partners with us in doing that. They now pay $7 million, up from zero just a few years ago, and we were recognized by the Orange County Tax Beers Association for our leadership in this area. The Orange County Association of Cities has recognized us with their Innovation Awards for our paperwork, production, arts, and dredging programs. So we're in great shape. I've been so pleased and honored and humbled to be the mayor this year, and I know that these are not my efforts, these are the efforts of the entire city council. This is a very collaborative city council that works together, everybody contributes, everybody has their hand on the oar, and everybody is responsible for these accomplishments that we talked about today. So Rush, I wish you all the best in the year ahead. It's an honor to serve with everybody here. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Well, I would like to take this opportunity to make a few remarks as well. We don't have to be over to the restaurant until about nine, so... I would like to thank the council for having the faith in electing me as the 45th individual to hold the mayorship in the city. And I would like to thank the citizens that in 2010 voted for me to elect me to the city council. And you've heard it before tonight, and I think you'll hear it many times in the future, it truly is an honor and a pleasure to serve as mayor of this incredible city. As former Mayor Hinn stated at one point in time, "The shining city on the bay." And while giving thanks, I would be remiss and probably would not be allowed to go home tonight if I didn't thank my lovely wife for her patience as I worked through every evening on City Manners, and a wonderful family, my son Rusty and his wife Allison, who has a year-and-a-half-old Ellie and expecting their second daughter, and my son Brad and his wife Meredith, who have a two-and-a-half-year-old son Henry and a 10-month-old son William, and my daughter Lindsay and her husband John Palmer, expecting their first boy in March. And I'm truly blessed to have the opportunity to live and be a member of this council in this town and be a part of this family. If you didn't keep up with the count, we're growing from three grandchildren to five grandchildren by the first quarter of next year, and being a grandparent is one of the greatest things in life, and I am adjusting to the concept of being married to a grandmother. Who would ever think of growing up on Irvine Ranch and farming and not even knowing if I could afford to go to college, ending up graduating from THE Cal Poly, San Luis Obispo? I thought I'd graduated with a 4.0 until someone told me it wasn't cumulative, but ended up working in the executive branch of the California government with Ronald Reagan as a member of his personal staff and becoming a friend and helping the Reagans to decide to buy a piece of dirt in the San Ynez Hills that became a Rancho de Selio, as well as building the ranch with him, opening up an architectural firm, opening up a real estate advisement company, and ending up as mayor, not just of any city, but mayor of Newport Beach. This truly is a wonderful place to live, yet there's always room for improvement. And I learned a long time ago that remaining level, dealing with the status quo is not an option. If you don't go forward, you fall behind, and we're going to strive to be better, and that's what I'm going to do while I'm mayor. We are financially strong, we are environmentally sound, yet we will not, we cannot rest. We must continue to focus on important issues. Issues like the airport, our largest threat to our quality of life and our property values. Issues like providing quality municipal services while containing the growth of government from operational expense to retirement benefits. Issues like keeping our bay and ocean waters clean and visitor-friendly. Issues like promoting our city to compatible markets world-ride. As you heard earlier, it is our visitors who provide so much of the funding we use to afford our quality of life. Issues like providing parks and having special places for our seniors. It's these items that I will keep us focused on in 2014. So much of our quality of life comes from the fact that we are safe. Individuals that make up our police and fire departments are the best of the best. Chief Johnson, Chief Poster, they are to be complimented for the quality-of-life safety they provide for our enjoyment. The staffs in our library services, public works, municipal operations, human resources, finance, community development, recreation, senior services, they're all leaders in their fields. Dave Webb, just retired Mark Harmon, Terry Cassidy, Dan Men, I'm not going to blow this, Manachevitz, did I do all right, Dan? Change your name for us. Kim Brandt, Laura Detwiler, all are important parts of our quality of life. Our city attorney, our city clerk are here for us every day, working to make our lives better. Leonti Brown and Aaron Harp are important team members, and our city manager. I cannot believe that there is anyone better that could have taken us through the tumultuous years of the recent past and the ongoing financial crisis that we're involved in, delivering an annual budget on balance, in balance, that has generated a surplus each and every year of the economic downturn, while providing generational value in new civic facilities. A truly organizational leader that has implemented council policy with style and with grace. And Dave, I know it hasn't been easy for you. You've been extremely effective, and for your success, we are blessed. And to my fellow councilmembers, to Councilmember Curry, for your financial leadership and your grace of leadership, to Councilwoman Gardner, for your environmental focus, to Councilman Petros, for your energy and fix-it attitude, to Councilwoman Daigle, for your consistent keeping us on track to bring the cost of government down, to Councilmember Hinn, for your experienced Fortune 500 CFO and human resource leadership, and to Mayor Pro Tem Ed Selage. There must be something. Keep thinking, keep thinking. Well, yes, there is. To Councilmember Selage, who understands development better than any of the rest of us, and in concert with former Councilmember Steve Rozansky, has negotiated over $70 million worth of developer fees that we have and will continue to use to keep traffic moving in this city, to keep our quality of life high while we continue to improve local economics. Together, we are a team. As you have seen, not always agreeing, certainly not being extremists, but we will come together to compromise to move the important agendas forward, and that's important. And then one other person that I would like to thank tonight, who's not able to be with us, however, I think most of you know who it is, someone that's been my right arm for the last 10 and 1/2 years, an excellent project manager with my consulting company, coordinated my 2010 campaign, and up until two months ago, served as my chief of staff. If it were not for Alan Lamone, I probably would not be here tonight. I thank you. I look at this coming year as a year to celebrate, to rejoice over our successes in shaping this shiny city on the bay that offers us all a high quality of life. And to this end, I would like to add, in addition to focusing on issues that are important to enhancing and protecting our quality of life, to also lead in celebrating our successes. In January, we will begin the celebration process with two events. The first is a wine and cheese gathering on January 15 at Oasis, an open house from 3:00 to 4:30 where the community is invited to learn more about the quality senior services that we provide. The second is a citywide culinary celebration during the weeks of January 17 to 26, with many of our restaurants impressing residents and visitors with their culinary expertise at discount prices. I ask you to join Linda and I at both of these events, and many more that will take place during the year. And then shortly following my remarks this evening, the real party of the night begins at the Back Bay Bistro, at the Dunes. And I know it's always dangerous to be in the position of being the speaker between food and beverage, though I will rapidly conclude at this point by saying once again that it truly is a privilege and an honor to serve as your mayor. May God continue to bless our wonderful city and all of us that have the opportunity to live, work, and play in this great community we call Newport Beach. Thank you. And with that, unless I screwed something up...
Adjournment, sir.
We do have three adjournments this evening, three individuals that have been a significant part of our community that are no longer with us. And the first one, in honor of Earl Fuesemann, Conadhamar resident and longtime Newport Beach police volunteer, Earl passed away on November 30. Earl was born in Kansas, but was raised in Iowa. After a brief career working in the oil fields, Earl enlisted in the United States Army and served for four years. After leaving the Army, Earl opened a dry cleaning business in Bell and eventually owned seven dry cleaning plants in the Los Angeles County. He later became a real estate broker and appraiser in Orange County. Earl was committed to community volunteer, who was close to achieving seven decades of service as a Rotarian, and he was a member of the American Legion for more than two decades. He served many organizations during his lifetime, from Meals on Wheels to the YMCA, and once served as a member of the Huntington Park City Council. In 1991, Earl was a member of the first class of graduates of the Newport Beach Police Department Citizens Police Academy, and went on to serve as one of our most dedicated and longest-tenured police department volunteers. He was Newport Beach's Police Department Volunteer of the Year in 2001, and logged more than 4,500 hours of volunteer service to our community. Earl was deceased by his wife Gigi, he is survived by his son Gene, daughter Jane Benson, four grandchildren, nine great-grandchildren, his brother Ralph, and his sister Hazel. A memorial service will be held at 10:00 a.m. on Friday, November 13, at Pacific View Memorial Park, following a lunch reception at the American Legion. Joseph Bell. Newport Beach resident Joseph Bell passed away on Thanksgiving Day. Joe was born and raised in Indiana and enlisted in the Naval Air Corps in 1942 while he was a student at the University of Missouri. He served as a naval officer and pilot for more than three years and spent time in the South Pacific during World War II. Joe returned to Missouri after the war and earned a degree in journalism. For four decades, Joe wrote for newspapers and magazines such as the Saturday Evening Post, Harper's Reader Digest, Good Housekeeping, The Los Angeles Times, and many, many more. He was recognized locally as the author of the Bell Cur- He was recognized locally as the author of The Bell Curve, a weekly column that ran in the Daily Pilot for the last 10 years of his career. Joe also wrote six nonfiction books, and taught nonfiction writing at UCI, where he met his future wife, Angel. Joe is survived by his wife Angel, his three children, David, Patricia, and Debbie, a stepson Eric Patterson, three grandchildren, one great-grandchild, Nalia Simpson, and Robert Winn. Former Newport Beach city manager Robert Winn passed away on November 30. Bob was born and raised in Idaho, he received his undergraduate degree from Rick's College, and a master's degree in public administration from San Diego State University. He first received as city manager, he first served as city manager for Imperial Beach in 1957 to 1968, and then spent three years as city manager of Coronado. His final career brought him to Orange County in 1971, when he accepted the position as city manager of Newport Beach. Bob and his family made Newport Beach their home, and he was an active member of the local Church of Jesus Christ of the Latter Saints, as well as civic groups, including the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce and the Commodores. As our city manager, Bob was known for being hardworking, ethical, and forward-thinking. He developed financial and planning policies that laid the groundwork for the city's current sound fiscal positions and stable administration. Though he retired from the city in 1991, Bob continued to work as a private consultant until he fully retired in 2005. He also remained a Newport Beach resident, and would gladly lend an ear to the city managers that followed him, providing insight or empathy as needed. He remains highly respected as a professional and was friends to many in our community. Bob was predeceased by his wife Gail and grandson Christensen. He is survived by five children, Susan, Stephen, Chris, Greg, and Franny, and their spouses, and 16 grandchildren. Services have been held, and with that, we are adjourned.